I'd like to call the work session to order Monday, March 6th, 6:00 PM. The council work session, councillor Santiago and councillor Holmes are on remote. We we are discussing the stormwater master plan. Public Works Director Dave Sukow is staff on this. Take it away.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, good evening. As you mentioned tonight, we're here to present on the stormwater master plan in May of 2020. We contracted with Brown and Caldwell. They are here tonight to present the work that they've been working on over the past three years, early three years. Then I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Hello, council mayor. My name is Angela Wieland. I'm a project manager with Brown and Caldwell in Portland, Oregon, and I've been managing the stormwater master plan for the city over the entire duration of the project. I'm joined today with Thomas Susser. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, good evening. I'm Thomas Susser. I'm a staff engineer with Brown and Caldwell. I've been working on this project also for the duration.
And then we're joined online by representatives from FCS Group, who did the financial rate assessment and SDC analysis. John Giller Ducci and Amanda Levine. Introduce themselves. I know they were online, I saw them.
Hi, I'll go ahead and go first. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
My name's Amanda Levine. I've been the project consultant on the project. Nice to meet everyone.
Didn't hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I just had to reboot. John Giller Ducci, I'm the principal with FCS Group.
I think that will get started. And apologies for my voice. I'm getting over a little bit of a cold. So in your packets, you should have a copy of the PowerPoint. There were a couple of very slight revisions made, so I'll note where those come in. But for today's work session, we have a few different goals. The first is to review the stormwater master plan development process and timeline. As Dave mentioned, the project's been going on for almost three years now. It started at the very beginning of the pandemic, and we're now starting to wrap up our final deliverables for that. We want to summarize some of the technical project elements. We want to summarize our capital project and our program recommendations and associated costs. And then finally, review the stormwater utility rate and SDC analysis results. And at that point, I'll turn it over to FCS to get. Before we get started, I just wanted to provide a little context and background. I recognize that this may be background information for a lot of you, but I wanted to differentiate and talk about a stormwater collection and conveyance system versus a sanitary sewer system. Sometimes those two terms can be misinterpreted, and it's important to differentiate. We're looking at the stormwater collection system, which is a series of pipes, collection system components like inlets, catch basins, that collect stormwater runoff generated from site impervious surface and some pervious surface. Conveys that down to a point of discharge, whether that is a stream or groundwater. And we'll talk about that a little more. Comparison, sanitary collection system is collecting non-podable water from residential, industrial, commercial sites, where it conveys that wastewater down to a treatment facility or a treatment plant generally located adjacent to a river. For that effluent is where the effluent is treated in accordance with requirements of the NPDS permit associated with that wastewater treatment plant facility, and then discharged. So it does have end-of-pipe treatment versus a stormwater collection system that doesn't always have end-of-treatment. So in the case of the city of Scapuce, stormwater runoff generated in the city either discharges to surface waters. So that would be Jackson Creek, Tosh Channel, South Scapuce Creek. Or about a third of the city discharges underground or to the subsurface. And it does that either through surface infiltration. So it kind of holds there and then it infiltrates through the soil media. Or via structural controls, like underground injection controls or dry wells, which there's a schematic on the slide, but it's basically a manhole or a structure that stormwater runoff will discharge into. There's perforations on the bottom, and then it'll infiltrate down into the soil. In both cases, there's the potential that pollutants can be generated from the site and can collected and conveyed in conjunction with stormwater runoff, discharged to either of those receiving water bodies, groundwater or surface waters. And in that context, that's where stormwater systems are permitted similar to a wastewater utility. In the case of Scapuce, the city of Scapuce does not have permit regulating stormwater runoff generated from the city and discharged to receiving waters. A lot of cities do. Those are called Phase One or Phase Two permities. There are some other requirements that the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality regulates, and that's what we had to consider in conjunction with the stormwater master plan. Specifically, the city operates a WPCC permit or a Water Pollution Control Facility Permit, their public underground injection controls, or those public UICs. In addition, the city is called out as a designated management agency on DEQs, Will Lamb of Basin Total Maximum Daily Load, their TMDL for Mercury. So in conjunction with both those kind of regulatory umbrellas, there's different requirements that we had to consider. Well, I'll talk a little bit about the city's stormwater system. The overall study area that we considered for the stormwater master plan included area both inside the city limits and then outside the city limits, whether susceptible to development or where stormwater runoff generated would in turn discharge into the city's stormwater collections. City's stormwater collection system is a series of kind of disjointed pipe networks that will outfall to those receiving waters or discharge to underground injection controls or other stormwater infiltration. Um, as I mentioned, again, there is no specific stormwater permit or stormwater discharges from city property as of yet, but that could be a regulation that we had to think about in the future. So in general, the city's stormwater, the city's public stormwater collection and conveyance system serves to protect private property from flooding and increased livability. And this is an important asset. The stormwater master plan, we had various goals and objectives. Primarily, we want to help guide stormwater drainage infrastructure improvements over our 20-year implementation period. And in doing that, we wanted to solicit information and feedback from city staff. We harness staff knowledge, incorporating their information and understanding of the collection system as they know it. On the ground, you know, eyes on it is much more important than any theoretical analysis that we would do. So we wanted to make sure and capture the information that city staff had already obtained. In doing that, we wanted to identify problem areas in the city, and we validated those problem areas or those capacity limitations using a hydrologic and hydraulic modeling. Wanted to identify program needs in the city. So the outcome from a stormwater master plan is a capital improvement plan, and that reflects capital projects as well as programs that are all intended to improve upon stormwater infrastructure. We wanted to identify programs to support regulatory needs, ongoing maintenance. Wanted to prioritize projects to develop a schedule of when capital projects should be implemented and use that information collectively to evaluate financials. So this is a schematic that's in the preliminary draft master plan now, but this shows in general the process that we went through to develop the stormwater master plan. As you can see, it starts with a comprehensive project planning effort where we solicit information from staff. We do workshops, we have site visits. We assess different issues and limitations within the city so that we know where to target our more detailed analysis, develop projects. Develop a list of project and program opportunities. And then from that list, we assess whether or not hydrologic and hydraulic model would be beneficial to evaluate those different locations in the city. We look through that information and we conducted a capacity evaluation where we looked not only at the areas that the city had preliminarily identified as being a problem, but also in the others that are a problem in the future. All that information is rolled into a preliminary capital improvement program or a capital improvement plan that includes, again, those projects, the programs, and then any additional policy recommendations that we would want to make. You look at staffing needs to support implementation of that capital improvement program as well as provide documentation and look at funding needs. So again, Dave mentioned that the project started in the summer of 2020. It started with that data compilation and project planning efforts. And that took about a year. And then in the summer and fall, we started building our hydrologic and hydraulic models. We looked more in depth at maintenance obligations, the regulatory obligations and staffing needs. Then we started going through the process of developing those capital improvement projects and programs and prioritizing them. So that takes us to where we are today, where we're looking at providing some additional outreach. Sorry, the cold is kicking in. Some additional outreach and then also presentation of our draft findings in support of the rate SDC. With that, I'm going to ta- turn it over to Thomas to talk through some of the more technical master plan elements.
Thank you, Angela. Jumping right into to these master plan elements, we're going to walk through each of the ones that you see in bold up there in a little bit more detail on subsequent slides. So these are all kind of the elements that come into play and go into the final products from the master plan. First, I just wanted to touch on a couple of those that are that are not in bold before we kept going. The first part is a code review and identifying any policy considerations. Code review being reviewing the city's public works design standards, any other relevant city code, making sure that all the recommendations that we make are in line with those existing city standards. Also identifying any gaps in the current public works design standards that would be gaps between current standards and the regulatory requirements. Some of those do have to do with water quality, as Angela mentioned. We have the total maximum daily load for Mercury. We have the water pollution, water pollution control facility permit as well. So water quality is something that's baked into all of the analysis that we do and projects that we identify as we move throughout the master plan. Final bullet at the bottom there is document development. As Angela mentioned, the final master plan is in progress as we speak. First step being problem area identification. At the very beginning of the project, you see sent out a survey to city staff. Know the system, ask of anyone to identify places where there are potential maintenance issues, existing capacity restrictions, places where the city sees flooding. Any other knowledge of the system that they can bring is a first step in identifying problem areas. We had a workshop with city staff to review the results of those surveys, walk through mapping exercises and understand potentially some of the root causes of those problem areas. Do a GIS data review. We can look at the city's storm infrastructure in GIS and identify places where there are gaps. There may be aging infrastructure, et cetera. Do look at the previous stormwater master plan, which in this case was from 1998. Are there any capital projects that were identified during that master plan that have not been not been implemented yet? Can add those to our problem area list. Finally, conduct a few field investigations and site visits. Help us understand the system on the ground, identify any other problems that we see. Result of that is 32, in this case, 32 stormwater problem areas that help inform the modeling effort as we. Other component is this UIC or Underground Injection Control Assessment. Have a subconsultant perform this. That is, the end result is a tool to inform where UICs can be a useful stormwater management technique in the future. They look at different regulatory criteria like minimum vertical and horizontal setback distances, soil types, groundwater elevations, all things that play into whether or not a UIC is unfeasible and would be effective as a tool. So the end result is that that map you see on the left there helps guide the UIC process in the future. Other element is staffing analysis. Now, regulatory requirements do drive maintenance responsibilities, upkeep of different stormwater infrastructure, et cetera. So be, as as a consultant, review current maintenance obligations of the city, current practices, and also take into account any potential future changes in those obligations that have to do with programs and projects that recommended as part of this master plan. We want to identify any gaps between current capabilities and staffing levels and that objected maintenance. We understand that Scapuce is a relatively small city. Staff wear many hats, things like street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, maintenance of green infrastructure facilities, all of that falls in the same sort of group. So the end results of this staffing analysis is a recommendation of about one FTE or full-time employee additional staff capability, and then applying a 30% contingency to that, drive it 1.3 FTE. Talk about that a little bit more as we get into the rate analysis later on. Okay. As we mentioned before, we have these 32 problem areas. We want to identify which of them are useful to be factored into our hydraulic and hydrologic modeling. So the first step in that is delineating 124, in this case, sub-basins within the city. That's splitting the city up based on topography, drainage to quantify and get a sense of when rain falls, where does that runoff go? We add different parameters to those sub-basins based on land use, soil condition, to to help further quantify runoff. And then from there, we're able to narrow our hydraulic model extents. So that's the pipes, the culverts, ditches throughout the city. To focus in on those problem areas that we previously identified. Larger the model is, the more time it takes, the more expensive it does become. And so we want to focus those modeling efforts just on identified problem areas to begin with. We did conduct model validation based on historical rainfall and tying in that with anecdotal information, pictures that were provided. So we can see if we run the same rainfall record through our model, does it produce similar results to what we've seen in past storms? He points throughout the city. So yeah, all of the data that goes into this model is from city GIS, survey, assessment. SGS has soils data that we use. Piece being also staff knowledge. Run different design storms through this model, being say the two-year storm, the 10-year, 25-year storm. In order to gain a picture of where there's vulnerable infrastructure, where you have capacity restrictions in the system. 25-year design storm is the focus. That is the standard that all the city infrastructure should be designed to. We also look at those smaller storms to help prioritize where there might be flooding frequently. And we want to design our capital projects to future land use conditions. So as as things get built out, there's more impervious area added, the infrastructure within the city can accommodate those changes. We end up with about 18 capital projects. Those are categorized based on whether they increase system capacity to existing infrastructure or add new infrastructure where it is needed. Have different objectives to reduce maintenance needs and add water quality treatment. Be able to produce maps, figures and tables to categorize all of those capital projects and produce fact sheet that you'll see in the master plan that runs through narrative explaining the origin of that source, whether it was identified by city staff or elaborated by the model. Describe the different phasing of construction activities that we would propose and then provide a cost estimate, which is a planning level cost estimate. Those is based on unit costs of materials needed and also applies contingency for things like pollution control, traffic control, all the other parts of project. Those cost estimates don't include any costs associated with land acquisition or investments. Planning level and comprehensive beyond that. So finally, we have our 18 capital projects. If you want to move towards prioritizing those, I'll turn.
This is an area where your slides are swapped. So as I was practicing today, I realized that I should better lead into the slide. Um, once the 18 capital projects were identified, we went through an effort with city staff to prioritize those projects, making sure that, again, they're scheduled in a way that's conducive to development pressures and more immediate need. We identified various scoring criteria. They're listed up here. We weighted that scoring criteria. So in some cases, the capacity deficiency, safety and liability, sequencing, so we need to do this project before we can do this project. And cost per drainage area managed were sort of those criteria that were weighted a little more heavily than others. Each project was independently scored. So we went through an exercise again with Chris and Dave and scored each project based on definitions. So we didn't try to minimize any subjectivity. And ultimately, those projects were prioritized, ranked, so that we could group those highest priority, medium priority and lower. I mentioned earlier that the overall capital improvement plan includes these capital projects but also a variety of programmatic. Difference between those is a capital project is usually a one-time cost. It's a lot of cost, but it's a one-time cost that you fund over a year or two, however long that design and construction period. But in some cases, to meet regulatory obligations and to meet ongoing and recurring maintenance program is a more reasonable kind of way to allocate money doing that. And so there is a series of six programs that we've identified through the course of the master plan. And I'll just talk through each of those briefly. Uh, the first being a CCTV program. And this is a program to inspect pipe. You know, pipe or underground, it's hard to see them. So you use a TV camera and you run it through your pipes to identify any condition deficiencies. That information is in turn incorporated into an asset management program. So a CCTV program requires somebody to video the pipes and then somebody to look at them and evaluate and rank each of those pipes. So there's a range in cost proposed for these programs, and I'm going to get to that in just a second. But that range reflects a differing level of spending. And that's where discussion with the rates. You'll see that there's generally a range associated. Second program is a repair and replacement program. This is a program that the city kind of internally does, but it's intended to be a more proactive means. Before a pipe fails, you've evaluated your system and you have funds set aside that you can go out and do more proactive placement of those deficient pipes where they do end up. Third is a stormwater asset management program maintenance. The city actually has an asset management program that they are starting to roll out. But for stormwater, stormwater utility versus water or sanitary, a lot of time, you don't have quite the same level of information that you need. So this line item is intended to incorporate as-built information more regularly, keep up the GIS network, so focus more specifically in the field where different assets are located. Fourth is a UIC retrofit program. And this is actually driven based on your WPCC. There's a requirement in your permit that you need to incorporate pre-treatment upstream of each of your UICs. City has 56 public UICs. Luckily, pre-treatment can be a range of different things. But this program is intended to incorporate pre-treatment, adjust the inlet leads up to the UIC, the configuration of the drainage system into those UICs to help comply with terms of your permit. There is a defined kind of timeframe with which you need to do that. Fifth is minor drainage improvement program. This is a lump sum cost that will allow public works to go out and respond more readily to issues as they come up, the smaller project needs that don't necessarily coincide with a large capital project. But you know, for example, this UIC is failing, it needs to be reconstructed. We need an additional catch basin in our cul-de-sac because we're getting a bunch of pond and water right here. So it just provides a little additional flexibility so that. The last program is a Green Street Pilot Program. This is a program intended to do more proactive treatment of stormwater runoff before it enters your collection system or UICs. This is done, you know, for a lot of jurisdictions with an MS4, municipal stormwater permit. They do have to do retrofits of their system and add water quality to their system, improve water quality conditions over time. Mentioned the city doesn't have that permit driver. They do have a driver with their TMDL. So this provides some flexibility to incorporate green infrastructure. So that would be planters and rain gardens, things like that, that are fairly common, mainly used for stormwater treatment. But do it in an opportunistic place. So if you're paving, repaving a road, incorporate it in that time. So through the stormwater master planning effort, we identified a total capital, capital project costs of about $20 million, of which some of that is deemed to be SDC eligible. So that means that the sizing of that project is part determined based on future growth or development opportunity. With regards to the programmatic summary, like I mentioned, there's a range of costs depending on the level of service. Then our staffing exercise. So I've mentioned the level of service, and this will be brought up during FCS's presentation as well. But we recognize that's a lot of money. That's a lot of, a lot of time, et cetera, especially for a smaller community. So we wanted to provide a range of options and use that range of options to inform what projects and programs you are deemed highest, highest, of highest value to you. So there's three level of service categories defined. Recommended level of service prioritizes the high and medium priority projects in the 20-year. Um, we implement the programs as we've identified with more of that higher level funding, the staffing and. From there, we could be more proactive, do all of the capital projects. There is with the cost. Or scale it back from there. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to FCS Group to talk through the rate implications.
Uh, thank you, Angela, and thank you, Mayor and Council. So our, our role on the project was, was to try and figure out how the city could pay for the programmatic and capital projects that have come out of the plan. And we've done that by the levels of service that Angela just described. Uh, next slide, please. So the way that we've laid this out tonight, we'll talk a little bit about the existing stormwater funding and rate for the city of Scapuce and then go into some rate study background and basics. And then Amanda will walk through the results of the rate analysis. We'll then come back. We have a little bit of system development charge background. And then, and then Amanda will take us through the SDC, system development charge calculation. And we've got comparable information for both the rates and, and the SDCs. Next slide, please. So this is the city's current rate. So this is the city's current rate in that right-hand column. Uh, five dollars and eighty-five cents per developed, single-family residential parcel. And then for all other developed property in the city, it's five dollars and eighty-five cents per equivalent service unit or ESU. And, and all an ESU is, is uh, two thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet of impervious area. So, and that, that's the average amount of impervious surface area on a single-family residence in Scapuce. So, uh, you know, for a large commercial property, you would have the measured impervious footprint divided by that two thousand seven hundred and fifty to come up with a number of ESUs. And then they would pay that times the five eighty-five. But, uh, uh, the five eighty-five is applied uniformly to, uh, the residential customer base. Uh, next slide, please. And I should say that provides the backbone funding for the city's stormwater program. So some, some rate study basics to go through. When we set utility rates or forecast them, um, we, we calculate the rates based on the costs of providing, uh, providing stormwater services. So there are a couple of types of, of costs. Operating costs, that's, you know, ongoing personnel costs, uh, materials and services. If you have to contract out for um, certain services, perhaps help with maintenance, um, that's an operating cost. The staffing additions that, that were mentioned, uh, previously that Thomas talked about, um, those are operating costs. And, and then we also set the rates such that they will uh, be sufficient to cover capital costs. So those are a little harder to predict, you know, bigger numbers. And as you can see in the graphic, they tend to be lumpier, you know, they might be low one year and really substantial another year. So one of our objectives is to try and develop a financial plan where the rate doesn't hop all over. It's relatively smooth. Um, and we do that by managing the reserve balances to accumulate money and then spend it on the capital projects. Um, and you see some examples there, infrastructure improvements, repair and replacement, like programs, retrofit programs, those are all capital projects that are funded through the rates. So the big, the big question when we are developing a financial plan is how much money is needed from rates in any given year? And to establish that, it's called the revenue requirement. Um, you see that, that box on the right, annual revenue needs. We forecast the operating cost. That's the budget, any staff additions or other operating cost additions. Uh, we forecast that into the future. We look at the capital plan and we schedule out those capital projects. And then we also look at fiscal policies. Um, we want to make sure that the city at the end of every year has some fund balance. And so we establish minimum reserve targets such that, uh, only in an emergency would the city access those, uh, reserve balances. Um, so we build our analysis such that there's a, there's that ending fund balance that's enough to cover those emergencies. Next slide, please. So I mentioned that, that those fiscal policies, these are the fiscal policies you will see built into the numbers that, um, that Amanda will go through in a minute. The operating reserve is just working capital. That's the money that the city has, uh, to use for the stormwater. Um, uh, operating costs. What we're recommending is that the city finish every year with at least a hundred and twenty days of cash operating expenses in the fund balance. So that's about one-third of the annual operating budget for twenty twenty-three. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, that'd be a little over a hundred thousand dollars. So we, we modeled not to go below that in that ending fund balance. For the capital reserve, and this is where, uh, money comes in and is banked for capital projects. We are, uh, modeling a year-end minimum target of a hundred thousand dollars. So those two are in a, are additive. We would want to end the year with about a hundred thousand in each of those accounts uh, in order for the city to be um, healthy enough to, to withstand, uh, an emergency on either the operating or the capital side. Next slide, please. So Amanda will walk us through the, uh, the initial results now, uh, for each of the levels of service.
Great. Thank you, John. Thank you, Council and Mayor. Uh, so this slide is just a recap of what Angela discussed in her presentation. We've got the basic recommended and aspirational levels of service. Uh, this graphic shows that the basic level of service is implementing those high priority projects. While the recommended level of service is both a mix of those high and medium priority projects. The aspirational level of service is all of the projects within the master plan. Next slide, please. So this layout, uh, better demonstrates how those levels of service are split across the, the full forecast. So we can see in fiscal years twenty twenty-three and twenty, twenty-four. Um, these are costs that have already been spent by the city, uh, starting in twenty twenty-five, moving all the way through twenty forty-four. We have all three levels of service and they are additive, meaning that, for example, in one of the aspirational levels of service, uh, columns, it's going to be the yellow, green and pink altogether. So this better kind of visually shows that difference in scale between the dollars of all of the levels of service. So the capital plan does form, um, the driver and the basis of those revenue requirements, uh, which is, you know, just a recap of what's gonna really make those rate increases different between each level of service. Next slide, please. So this is the revenue requirement slide for the basic level of service. When we're looking at this graph, the dark gray, blue part of the column, that's representing the O and M expenses for the utility. Uh, the colored column, the gold in this case, is going to be that cash available for capital projects. When you're looking at the two black lines, uh, the one without the dashes, the solid line, that's going to represent the revenue at current rates. While the line with the dashes is going to be the rates with those increases. So looking at the basic level of service revenue requirement in columns fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, there's a fifty-two percent increase in rates for those three years, which puts the utility at about a twenty dollar and fifty-four cent charge per month, per ESU by the end of that year. After that year, the utility is able to maintain their operating and capital costs with about three percent as an annual rate increase thereafter. Next slide, please. So as you can see, the layout for the slide is identical apart from the amount of capital that those rates are funding. So instead of the fifty-four percent, we're going up to sixty on this graph. So we're ending at a twenty-three dollar and ninety-six cent charge by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. After that fiscal year, we can also keep the utility at a three percent rate increase on an annual basis. And that will be able to cover the operational expenses as well as the capital expenses for the recommended level of service. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the last level of service, that most expensive capital plan. So those sixty percent go up to sixty-seven per year where at the end of twenty twenty-six, the charge is twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And the annual rate increases after fiscal year twenty twenty-six move up to five point five instead of three. So the big difference is, of course, those different colored chunks, um, of each column. As the rates go up, more capital is able to be funded from cash. Next slide, please. This slide is a comparison of those monthly rates that the customers would see for each level of service. So the fiscal year twenty twenty-six are those ending points that I pointed out on the previous three slides comparing the end of those three larger rate increase bumps. Uh, but by end of year fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, the aspirational level of service is just above thirty dollars. Recommended level of service, uh, is at twenty-five and basic level of service is just under twenty-two. Next slide, please. This slide is a comparison between the city of Scapuce and other neighboring or similar jurisdictions within the area. There are a few caveats with this kind of comparison. Of course, there's no way to know where other cities lie in their, you know, journey through their capital plans. They could be falling behind in where they're, uh, setting their rates, that kind of thing. There's also clean water service charges that are part of some of these jurisdictions as well. So that's a good thing to keep in mind when looking at the city's rates compared to everyone else. But in, in general, the city is in that lower half of the neighboring jurisdictional rates here, all three levels of service as well. And next slide, please. I'll hand it back to John for system development charges.
Okay, so we will, um, let that sink in a little bit and then move on to system development charges. As, as you know, um, SDCs are the one-time charges paid at the time of development by new development. So these charges are not applied to existing customers in the city. Um, the law allows SDCs to be charged in, in Oregon for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation in parks. Obviously, our focus tonight is on stormwater. We follow the law very carefully. Uh, it provides for system development charges to be used, calculated based on the cost of capital projects and, and spent only on capital projects. So we can't spend them on operations. They include usually a buy-in to existing system facilities if there's unused capacity. Um, that's called the reimbursement fee and also, uh, a share of planned projects. Um, those, the share of projects which will serve growth, basically, capacity increasing portions of projects. And SDCs are intended to represent a share of system capacity. They're not, they're not local facilities. They're not the water meter. This were water. We're talking about a share of the, of the public system. Next slide, please. So one of the things, uh, similar to the rates, when a new single-family residence um, develops in the city of Scapuce, they will pay for one ESU and that charge, which is a little over seven hundred dollars per ESU right now. Um, that would be charged at the time of permitting to that, to that new customer. Uh, uh, next click, please. In the case of a large commercial development, you, you know their impervious footprint at the time of development as part of the building permit. And you divide that by that ESU value to come up with the number of ESUs and they would pay that number. In this case, uh, this was an example, Fred Meyer. This would be nine ESUs. They'd pay nine times the, uh, SDC per ESU. Next slide, please. So the math in an SDC calculation is pretty straightforward. The improvement fee, which is the bulk of this, this charge, um, is based on that capacity increasing portion of each planned project. And that the sum total of those growth-related project costs divided by the growth that, that they will serve gives us our improvement fee. If there were a reimbursement fee, it would be based on unused capacity in the existing system. Again, divided by the growth that it will serve and together, they're intended to represent a share of the capital or infrastructure system that's needed to serve each unit of, of new growth. Next slide, please. So Amanda will walk us through the calculation here.
Thank you. I think one more click. Great. So this slide is talking about all of the different components of that calculation that John just walked through. So from the graphic here, we can see four main components. That first piece is going to be the improvement fee. And this is including all of the SDC eligible capital costs within the plan. Uh, this also includes the current fund balances for the utility. The next step is looking at the compliance costs, that gold portion. This is going to be five percent of the improvement fee costs, which are right above. This is including a lot of the administrative or quote, compliance pieces of the charge. Uh, the next piece is moving into what we're actually going to divide those costs by. So we add the improvement fee costs together with the compliance costs and then divide them by that darker green portion, which is the growth in system demand, uh, the customer base, the growth in ESUs. So based on work from Angela and Thomas, we were able to come up with uh, the growth in ESUs for this development, this city at seven thousand eight hundred and nine total ESUs. So we have our total costs divided by our growth in system demand, which equals the bottom highlighted section in pink, the system development charge. So this is our answer to the previous slide, the answer to all these calculations. There's a total SDC per E, per ESU of six hundred and fifty-four dollars. Uh, next slide, please. So looking at this new charge compared to the previous charge, there is a slight decline, a fifty-six dollar reduction within the charge. It's generally, um, on pace with what the previous charge was and is still in kind of the bottom half of that comparison survey with all of the neighboring and similar jurisdictions. And similar caveats also apply to this kind of comparison as well, uh, especially as SDCs are not as frequently looked at as rates. Uh, so some of these cities or jurisdictions might not have updated their charge as recently as Scapuce is.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, there's an asterisk on Cornelius and Forest Grove saying that their charge is set by Clean Water Services. What would, what would warrant that? What would?
So clean, if I, if I can jump in here, Amanda, I didn't mean to.
Yes.
Um, Clean Water Services is a regional provider of stormwater and wastewater services in Washington County. So those cities don't have their own local SDCs. The Clean Water Services SDC applies in those, in those cities.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, next slide, please. This brings back to Angela. Thank you.
So with that, um, that kind of summarized the utility, the SDC analysis. So throughout our stormwater master planning process, next step is to determine a preferred level of service through feedback, uh, received today. Um, and also the feedback that Dave and Chris sure will hear about. Um, also be preparing a draft final stormwater master plan or public review draft master plan or review by council. Um, there's likely to be a follow-up city council presentation when it comes to adoption of the master plan.
Yeah, okay.
Um, as well as the utility rate adoption. I think with that, we've concluded our presentation.
Thank you very much. Um, timing wise, we have about ten minutes. Um, if we go beyond that, um, we would reopen it during our public meeting or normal council meeting. Um, but should I, I do have one gentleman that did want to speak on this. Do I have time to let him speak at this time? Or do you have any questions first and if we have time?
I have questions.
Yes.
Um, just for context, Dave, for the public, um, when you look at our rates currently, they're quite low. Um, historically, our rates have maintained that way. Can you just kind of give a little bit of background about where our rates are now, where they've been, why they've sort of stayed where they are and the need to maybe change that for the future?
We'll do my best.
Thank you.
So the stormwater fund to the city is relatively new, if you will. I think it started about eight years ago. Um, it was, it was a fairly new fund when I came onboard. Um, and it, to date, it isn't even being fully utilized.
Um, and it, to date, it isn't even being fully utilized. It's not paying its fair share of costs that Public Works has incurred. And this will be the first year we actually are planning to bring it up to speed, if you will, with what the other funds are paying for as far as maintenance costs of our equipment and things.
So just to re, you're saying we're needing to pull funds beyond this in other areas just to cover what you're doing with stormwater?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, and so I think it was right at $3 when I came on. We recognized quickly that that wasn't enough. And so we've been just putting on enough, add, if you will, to the cost to run the basics as we see them at the moment, um, which is not what's even recommended as basic level of service by this. We've only been doing about 20% of our system and not doing the TV work yet. So, um, we're, we're falling short because we don't have the funding. The current fee is basically paying for minimal projects, the 20% maintenance of the system and operating the street sweeper. Do you see it? The seasonal falls four months and then once a month after that. So really, that's about all it's covering. There's not much money for capital. Budget $100,000 in capital right now. Paying for this was one portion of it. So now we won't have to do that moving forward. But yeah, we are behind and as you can see, it's, it's not an ideal situation moving forward for us. And so staff's going to go to work and try to find some sort of a compromise. What's, what we really need to do and what's palatable for the community and council and everybody. So that's where we're at. We don't have a clear plan. But obviously, your feedback tonight gives us direction as to what you think is a palatable number and then we can start to build a plan around that.
It's safe to say that any rate increase would be providing a higher level of service and maintenance to our community. It's just, unfortunately, as you mentioned, we're only doing about 20% of the whole system at this point in time. And in order to provide a service at the level that our community deserves, it's going to require a substantial raise in our, in our rates. And I know that's not easy to swallow.
That's correct. And if you look in the presentation, you'll see the O and M portion versus capital. But we're kind of running really at just the bare minimums of O and M. We're not even planning for the capital yet. And that's another key component to start chiseling on that 20-plus million dollars worth of projects that are identified. So like I said, it's not an ideal situation. We're probably not going to hit the optimum. So we're just going to have to find, like I said, a, a palatable. And moving forward.
And I think that that speaks volumes to the empathy that our staff has for our community, knowing that this is a big shift in what they would be paying monthly. And so thank you for being so conscientious of that as, as you are. I'm sure you would love to check off all the projects and get all the things. Uh, but I know that I'm hearing, you understand that's not a reality.
We recognize it, you know, right at the moment, we're in the middle of rebuilding a wastewater facility. It's 20-plus million dollars by itself. We've been revamping our, uh, water distribution system. We're starting to replace pipes there that have been neglected for years. And I think we're doing a good job of recognizing that and getting strategies. And now, now that we're coming to the end of this, we'll build a strategy for stormwater as well.
Um, I do have two counselors online that would like to speak as well. So we'll start with Counselor Santiago.
Thank you. Um, thank you to Brown and Catwell team for presenting. Um, I do have some, uh, questions in the problematic activities. Uh, are you, just to clarify, are you recommending to implement these programs? And that, is that part of the cost of rates from scoring them from high to medium to low? And a question to the city is, uh, do we have anything similar in place right now currently? And, and I have another question too, to follow up.
Okay. Well, I can respond to the first one. Oh, yes, the programs are, uh, new costs and those costs have been reflected in the rate and SDC analysis that were, uh, presented by FCS group. So there was a range in costs, so the basic level of service at the lower end of the range of programmatic costs and the, uh, recommended and aspirational levels of service reflect the higher.
And, well, since you're top on that topic, um, my question is also is, you know, the estimated cost and how you're estimating the cost of, you know, throughout the years? Is it a percentage? Is it a, you know, how do you guys come up with the estimated cost of increase throughout, you know, 20 years?
Oh, on the, are you talking specific to the programs?
Right, exactly. So it says 10 to 20 a year. Um, and I'm guessing if you already implemented these fees into the projected of 20 years, how did that, how are you estimating that increase? And would that be, um, a fair, a fair estimate?
So right now, so this is the list of the program costs. And so those are all accrued annually. Um, the UIC retrofit program presumably, once that program is complete, you could discontinue that, that particular program. But right now, stormwater assets are in place and the 10% of piped collection system, like for example, with the CCTV program, that assumes that you will get through your entire system in 10 years. And at that point, you should probably revisit those same, uh, locations that you had looked at 10 years prior. So these are intended to be recurring costs every year with the exception of the UIC retrofit program, which again presumably should be complete in the timeframe.
Okay. My last question is, is this the first time presenting to council? Is this your first, because you've been, and added, you've been working on this within three years. So I'm just wondering if this, is this the first presentation?
Uh, yes, this is the first presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Holmes.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you. Uh, so first I want to say fabulous job packaging this information. Um, the three things really stood out to me in this report that I would like to see perhaps, uh, replicated in future reports that we get from consultants. So I really appreciated the three levels of funding for the capital investments that would cover just basic level of service, the recommended level and then aspirational level. I think that's something we could maybe use in the Parks Master Plan. Um, I also like how you guys identified the need for additional FTE to be built into the budget. Again, that's something we can use for future plans. And then the comparison to other cities is really, really helpful. That's something that I think we didn't have in the community development fees, uh, report from last session. That would be helpful. So, um, great job on that. And if that's something we can apply going forward, that would be wonderful. Um, so one thing that would be really helpful for me as a new council person to understand is really what the results and benefits are that would come along with a rate increase and all of these, um, projects. You talked about, uh, reduced flooding in certain areas. If there's a way to kind of, um, demonstrate the impact of that, what that would look like, that would be really helpful, I think, in selling this to the community. If there's water quality improvements, particularly for Scapuce Creek, uh, I think we've seen some recent reports about the different, some alarming levels of, uh, things happening in the creek. And if this would be a way to help, uh, reduce that, that would be really wonderful to understand. And then understanding what the risks of regulatory non-compliance would be if these projects don't go into place would also be really helpful because I think we're going to have to package every increase to the community. And then just lastly, um, to staff, you know, we've been talking about a lot of different fee increases for services and they're all justifiable. Um, I think, uh, yeah, they, they're, these are all areas that we need to be looking at in improving the funding of, if we could get maybe a, a bigger picture understanding of where we're talking about fee increases. So we talked about rate, so we have rate payer increases for some of the, the water fees that Dave mentioned. We talked about development fees for the community development, um, process with Lori's staff, understanding what that is, and, and we're talking about SDCs today. So if we could just get maybe a big picture understanding of what are the rates that have been increased or the fees that have been increased the last year? And what are we talking about potentially increasing in the next year or two? So we can consider all of these within a bigger context. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor Holmes, we're right at seven. So can we, we'll close the work session and open the agenda, or open the regular meeting and then revisit this. We'll look to put that back on the agenda right about public comment to finish some of these questions.
Great.
That work?
Yep, thank you.
So that work session is.